Good evening and welcome to the April 9 regular study meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. Roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the D S this evening are representatives of City Planning Department, the city's Attorney Office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in a silent mode or turned off. For items that are not public hearings, I will provide an opportunity for the public comment. The roll call, Mr. Savinon.
Mr. Edmonds.
Here.
Mr. Hudson. Mr. Kempin.
Here.
Mr. Crent.
Here.
Mr. Sanzika.
Here.
Mr. Shepkey.
Here.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Mr. Strat.
Here.
Mr. Tagle. Here. All right, second item is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion. Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
Move to approve.
Mr. Schultz, seconds.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Crent.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepkey.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Strat.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Item number three, approval of the minutes of the March 26, 2013 special study meeting. On a motion to...
I'm moved to approve.
Mr. Crent?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kempin.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Crent.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepkey.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Strat.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Item number four, public comments for items not on the current agenda. Seeing a light crowd tonight, we'll move on to item number five. It's a postponed item. It's a preliminary site plan review, file number SP 981. Proposed Troy shops, south side of Big Beaver, west of Crooks, 1475 West Big Beaver, section 29, currently zoned BB Big Beaver District. And Carlisle or Mr. Savinon?
Mr. Carlisle.
Thank you. Good evening to the Planning Commission. As the chairman noted, this is a postponed item. The Planning Commission last considered this at their meeting two weeks ago. Just for a little background, the applicant is proposing a multi-tenant, 17,000-square-foot retail building at the existing Christensen site on Big Beaver. The site is zoned form-based Big Beaver, and the applicant simply needs site plan approval for this development. In our previous review, which I went over in detail at the last meeting, we did state a few of our concerns, and I want to highlight those and how they've been addressed subsequently by the applicant. One of our initial concerns was the retaining wall on Big Beaver and the barrier that created between the connection of the Big Beaver sidewalk and the existing development. The applicant has installed stairs along the western edge of that retaining wall to connect the site with the Big Beaver sidewalk, and so we feel that does comply and meet with our requirements for connectivity along Big Beaver. Second of all, one of our concerns was the parking lot configuration. The dimensions included in the plan were deficient in terms of length. The applicant has corrected that as well as revised the parking count so that it complies with the ordinance's requirements. Another concern that we had was the location of the bicycle parking. It was in the rear of the building. The applicant has subsequently moved that to the front of the building where most of bicycle traffic will be coming in off of Big Beaver, so it provides bicycle parking right in front of the retail buildings themselves. A fourth concern was the width of the walkway adjacent to the retail building and the drive aisle. The applicant showed that at four feet initially. We didn't feel like that was sufficient to provide adequate pedestrian access. The applicant has widened that to approximately eight feet in width along that entire length, so that should provide sufficient pedestrian access as well as create a safety barrier between the drive aisle and the pedestrians. The applicant has added pedestrian walkway through the parking lot in the form of striping, so that should provide sufficient pedestrian access and circulation in the existing parking lot. The applicant is continuing to work with the western property owner in regards to a cross-access agreement. That will be important when and if that western property should ever redevelop in the future, and that will provide sufficient cross-access and potentially eliminate the need for additional or remove the existing curb cut on Big Beaver. The applicant has increased their total amount of landscaping as well as provide sufficient landscaping calculations and revise their landscaping plans accordingly. The landscaping does comply and actually exceeds the landscaping requirements for the district. And lastly, there were some errors in the phonometrics that were submitted. The applicant has revised the phonometrics, and they do comply with ordinance standards. The applicant has brought a material sample board for the commission to review. If necessary, they've also provided a color rendering in your packet. I do apologize, I believe there was a couple of site plans that were sent out to the Planning Commission, and we have rechecked all the site plan, and they do comply with all ordinance requirements, so I apologize for the initial site plans that were sent out. In summary, the applicant, I do want to commend the applicant. They've done a great job of meeting our concern and working with us to get this project into compliance with ordinance as well as exceed ordinance requirements. And so with that, we do recommend preliminary site plan approval, contingent upon them, continue to work with the western property owner for the cross-access agreement as part of the final site plan submittal.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Seeing none, would the applicant like to come forward and add comments?
Thank you very much for having us today. My name is Jordan Jonah with the A F Jones Development. And Ben, thank you for that comment. If only my dad was here to hear it, he'd be so much better. We did take all of the comments into concern, concerning comments, and we believe we addressed them as best as possible and make this development much better. We provided a lot more green space. We took away some of the parking and put a lot more green space in the back and a large patio in the front. Widened walkways to eight feet to make this more pedestrian-friendly. If there's any questions or concerns, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for the petition? Mr. Kemp.
Mr. Jonah, I've got a couple of quick questions. I was looking over the drawings.
Jordan, please.
Jordan, okay. Mr. Jonah is your dad?
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Jordan, on drawing, I'm going to refer to two drawings. This is A1 dot zero dot one and A2 dot zero dot one. One shows a plan view, a floor plan. That's the A1, and the A2 are the elevations. Now, I'm looking at the floor plan, one that's A1, with the north arrow pointing, and it shows on the west end of the building, there's two doors that open to two different shops. When I look at the north elevation on the west end, there are no doors. They're on the east side. Is there a...
There would be access from both sides of the building. Right now, we don't know exactly which tenants are coming into the space. It's generic as possible.
I'm just wondering why they're...
Those doors will actually, there'll probably be doors in all different breakup units, and some will be used and some will not be used depending on the tendency of the building. We are marketing this to higher-end users that want to be in the mall but necessarily can't make the mall work and want to be enclosed for some reason in the mall.
Another quick question on the drawings. Drawing LS dash one shows no stairs on the west side that stairway access from the sidewalk down to the retail stores, but drawing A zero dot one dot one shows the stairway. Is that just an oversight or...
Within the process, when we were here last time, and this time, we did add stairs. There are...
I just didn't show it on the drawing. If I'm looking at LS dash one, it doesn't indicate stairs there. I'm just wondering if...
You know...
That drawing has not been revised at this point?
I believe those, the LS one, are the landscaping plans. They are, they should be in there, LS one, oh one. I believe they are in the...
The stairs aren't there. I just wondered why they...
They're not?
Well, I don't want to speak for Mr. Jonah, but I believe...
I believe there are stairs. You know, there are stairs right in the corner.
On LS one?
It could be the wrong date of a plan, but...
Okay.
Those are the older plans up there. There was a new landscaping plan submitted with stairs and access points.
Very good.
Mr. Tagle? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just for the edification of the Planning Commission, what we require when we go through the final site plan, including all the design, is when they finally get approval, they provide us a revised landscape plan and site plan that represents the Planning Commission conditions and, you know, what comes out of engineering review. Sometimes there's very minor tweaks, you know, moving a catch base in here, that type of thing. At that time, the landscape plan and the site plan will be identical. So any inconsistencies like you identified, Mr. Crent, will be picked up and will be addressed at that time.
Very good, thanks. Excuse me.
And one other point that, just discussed with the access point with Ben, with the property to the west of us, we are trying to work with the property owner adjacent to us. We will revise it to show an access point if in the future we're ever be able to come to agreement with him to connect the sites and make it more friendly. We're always looking for better access to any site, so...
Mr. Schultz, did you have a question?
Just a question, a couple of comments and a question. Same drawing, A zero dot one dot one, which shows the stairwell. I personally think a four-foot-wide stairwell is kind of insignificant coming off a road the size of Big Beaver and into a development the size of this one, but that's a personal thing. On that same drawing, you're showing an iron railing. Is that going to go at the top of the retaining wall?
We have to meet code with the railing part. I would prefer actually to do a glass railing, which I, we've talked about earlier, and even widening the stairs, working with the grades, even if we have to put in another stairway, I wouldn't mind also.
My only observation would be, number one, it says iron stairway, which means after the first winter, you're going to have a rust bucket sitting on top of that fence because of the amount of salt that goes on Big Beaver Road. And secondly, again, personal opinion, the design you've shown here looks like something out of a 1950's mobile home park, not...
I will, I'll be more than happy to work with any design issue, any design with any...
Those scrolls are what they used to put on screen doors back in the 50's.
I think I still have that at my house, so...
What I grew up in did, so those are, I'm just, I looked at the drawing, and I'm going, really, a four-foot-wide sidewalk or four-foot-wide stairwell. It's going to be real hard for one person to go up and one person to go down on a four-foot-wide stairwell.
The issue was the grade that drops, and there would be a break in the middle of the stair. Adding another staircase is a solution, which I don't mind doing.
Okay. Just, thank you. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Strat.
I'm a little bit confused, and maybe you can help me out. C2, that is actually the demolition plan?
I'm sorry, just, I'm getting my bearings on the plans. These are demolition plans, I believe. They're civil plans for demolition, yes.
Pardon me?
Yes, they are civil plans for demolition.
So, it's a demolition, right?
Yes.
What is that indicating on the top there? Is that the outline of a building?
On the top?
Yeah, in front, between the street and the existing building. I'm confused as to the size of that. I thought you were demolishing the whole thing, and I thought the new proportion was going to be different.
Yeah, that is the parking lot in front where we're taking out, we're going to mill all the asphalt and take out the asphalt to put the new building pad.
Is that what that's indicating?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, that's the parking lot.
There's a note on the sign.
Okay, I couldn't read it, okay.
It's to remove all the asphalt.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Would you like to tell us about the building materials you're proposing?
We are using first-class materials on this project. They're all natural limestone, similar to what we are using on the Big Beaver Center at Alpine and Big Beaver.
The camera's picking it up. I'm looking at the...
All right. We're proposing a red brick with a smooth and rough finish limestone. It's all natural stone, a silver window frame, and they're all first-class materials.
What's the product that he's just lifting up there?
This is limestone. It's Indiana limestone.
The one's a smooth finish and the one's a rough texture finish.
This is the stacked stone that you see in between. It looks a little yellow on the elevations just because of the way the AutoCAD rendering program works, but this is all natural stacked Indiana limestone as well. This is just, it has various colors in it, so it provides a little more depth and detail.
It's an architecture feature used to break up the building with the same material but a different texture.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about the materials? I'll make a comment. It's nice to see that you're using all natural materials.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anything else for the petitioner? Mr. Carlisle?
Excuse me. If the Planning Commission wishes the applicant to either widen the width of that stairwell on Big Beaver, if it's possible, or put in a second one, that should be a condition of the motion, just because it's not reflected on the site plan itself.
And in a resolution, a hard copy was distributed.
I was going to mention that, but thank you, Mr. Savinon. Well, personally, I think a wider sidewalk would be much more inviting, but I'm not sure if I understand the issues with the grades and if that could be worked around or not.
I will definitely look at the grades. We've looked at it once before, and a break in the stairs where the stair would be on a slant, where we're trying to keep it level instead of raising the wall. I'll look at it again to widen the staircase. If we are not, I would be more than happy to put in a second staircase.
As Mr. Savinon said, we have a hard copy of the resolution. If someone would like to move that?
Give me just a minute.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Schultz?
Resolved the planning, the preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance as requested for the proposed Troy shops located on the south side of Big Beaver Road, west of Crooks, 1475 West Big Beaver, in section 29, within the BB Big Beaver District, regranted, subject to the following conditions. One, provide cross-access agreement as part of the final site plan submittal. And two, either widen the proposed stairwells or add an additional stairwell.
Support? Mr. Edmonds? I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Yes.
Since I didn't read this before I was reading it into the record, what happens with item one, Ben, if they are not able to obtain a cross-access easement to the property next door?
They should at least show a cross-access on their part of the property so that if and when the owner of the western property gets sold, they can work with that future owner.
So you're saying simply that this requires that it be shown on the plan, not executed?
Not executed, correct.
Okay. Good?
And I think, I believe the applicant is at least willing to do that. I've talked to them previous about this.
Just the phraseology, they said provide a cross-access agreement, sounds like you're insisting that it, or we're insisting that it be executed.
Do you think we need to wordsmith this, or is it adequate? Ms. Lancaster, I mean, what's your legal opinion?
Since he can't pry anything from the neighbor anyway, has no legal authority, I think it's okay as written.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before we call the vote? Mr. Savinon?
Mr. Crent?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shepkey?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Look forward to this project. Thank you.
We do too.
We do too, yes.
All right. Item number six is a study session item. It's a master plan update, and... Mr. Carlisle. Mr. Dick Carlisle. The big guns come in.
Well, Commissioner Kempin, I don't think we've had an opportunity to meet, but hello, I'm Dick Carlisle. And hello, everybody else. Well, believe it or not, it's time to consider revision to the master plan. And we'll talk a little bit about it in a moment, but as you know, Michigan law was revised in 2008 to require that communities at least review and consider revision to the master plan every five years. Done for a very good reason, because when we helped the city with the first master plan here, the last time the city's master plan had been revised was when Mr. Crent was in high school, so...
Thank you.
So, so we know that it's been quite a while. But anyway, what we want to talk about tonight, and I think on the PowerPoint we have an agenda, but we want to talk a little bit about some of the background behind the master plan, the fact of some of the focus areas that need to be reviewed, and a community engagement process, which I know is something of importance to the commission. Regarding the 2008 master plan approach, there were a variety of innovative topics that were considered. You might recall, commissioners that were involved back then, that we had sort of come off of a round of, a second round, I guess, of Troy Futures after it had been redone from previous work. And so we had a lot of good public input at that time already, and a lot of good ideas came out of that Troy Futures group. Among those was to explore green building and sustainable design techniques, to attempt to have, to consider development in a more context, contextual manner and context-sensitive, and to ensure that transitions between land use was done in an appropriate manner. There was also a large interest, partly as a result of the Big Beaver study. Obviously, other work that had been done is to try to promote more mixed-use development in the city. And finally, with some of the looming concerns, I mean, I mean, they were already here, frankly, regarding the city's economic base, is also to use the master plan as a vehicle to explore how we could balance strategic growth with economic development. And I think some of the things that you've been seeing recently are the results of, I think, some success in that particular regard. We also, as part of the plan, investigated site design and architectural guidelines, the use of form-based codes, performance zoning, stronger emphasis, at least in the master plan, on natural feature preservation. And one of the things that we emphasized with the commission then, and will continue to emphasize, is that the master plan should be a policy-based document. Way too many communities rely simply on that graphic map or that plan as their master plan. However, we know, especially in a community as complex as Troy is, and especially in many areas, that oftentimes you can't reflect, you know, an intent on a map. You have to have words to go along with it, and words that are explanatory and give you guidance over time in terms of what the policy direction is of the city. As I said before, a five-year update is required by law. It's also a good idea. Conditions change. You know, we know that in the last five years, a number of things, we've gone through the depths of a very severe, you know, recession, some say depression, in the state of Michigan. We're beginning to come out of it. It's time to look forward. It's a great opportunity for commissioners at this point, because, you know, it's one thing to be planning commissioners and reviewing site plans, it's another thing to be planning commissioners and planning the future of your community. So, I mean, this is an opportunity to really put your stamp, you know, at least on the long-range vision. And this is frankly the primary reason why commissioners are commissioners, you know, why we call them planning commissions and not zoning commissions. So this is a great opportunity, and I know that those commissioners, I believe the commissioners who were involved before, did find it to be, you know, an interesting and exciting opportunity to really develop what really was the full, complete master plan for the city that the city's had in really in 30 years. It's also an opportunity to evaluate whether the documents that are currently in place do reflect your thinking and the policy of the city and whether they remain viable. Obviously, we must have learned some things over the last five years, especially seeing the projects that have come in some of the direction of the city, so it does provide an opportunity to sort of, you know, revamp that and reconsider it. And finally, it also provides consideration of any new issues that may have arisen in the last few years. The other point that I want to make too about the importance of the master plan is it does provide, you know, a legal basis, there is some legitimacy in terms of the legal basis that it provides for your zoning ordinance. So the policies that are reflected in your master plan are really carried out in terms of implementation through the zoning ordinance, so obviously the two documents have to work hand in hand. So some of the questions that need to be considered during this master plan update is, is the base data still current? Well, we know some of it is not. For example, the population data. Since the 2008 plan, we now have the 2010 census data. There is a wealth of information that will tell us interesting things about your community. One of the things I will tell you that I know, because not only do I know this from personal experience, but I know it from looking at demographic data, is we're going to see over the next 20 years this exponential explosion in the aging population. This is obviously something that the city of Troy needs to consider along with all other communities. That's just one example. The other questions that have to be asked are the decisions that you've been making over the last five years, are they consistent with the plan? So the question is, are you, are the, is your decision-making consistent with the plan, or is the plan out of sync with some of the direction of your decision-making? So that's an important time to reconsider that. Have there been changes that have occurred in the community that were not anticipated in the 2008 plan? I don't think any of us could have anticipated, even in 2008, some of the economic downturn that has had the impact on the city that it has had. So consequently, you know, this is maybe an appropriate time to reflect upon that and make any adjustments to the plan that you think are necessary. And have there been any changes, this might be a loaded question, in public opinion, or other policies that might differ from your goals and objectives and direction of your overall master plan? One of the things that, again, we will emphasize very strongly and ask that you spend a great deal of time really reviewing and either, you know, reconfirming or revising, and that is the goals, policies, and the strategies in the master plan. Because again, this is, these are the things that really give the foundation for so much of what the basis for the plan is, and also what some of the thinking in the zoning ordinance has been. So from a standard of background, this is a general overview of the kinds of things that we would ask you to be thinking about as the master plan moves forward. Now, I know Ben wants to talk about some of the more specific focus areas.
I feel like I'm getting called the principal's office by standing up here. I'm not used to standing up here. If I'm a little nervous, it's because my boss is here right behind me. One of the interesting things that I've enjoyed so far in my time in Troy is that with both the master plan and the zoning ordinance, I approach it with a fresh eyes, because I was not part of the drafting of it in either case, and so I feel like I can approach it a little more objectively than maybe some other people involved. So one of the great things about doing an update to a master plan is you can really dive down into more specifics about a particular area or a particular subject. You're not, you're looking citywide, but you have the ability, because you're not, it's not a 20-year plan, you're updating it in five years, you can look more specifically at certain issues and certain topics. So what we have done, working with the director as well as Mr. Miller and the city manager offices, we've identified what we think are the, some of the four of the key topics to move forward and address in the five-year update, as well as those issues that Mr. Carlisle mentioned for as the normal standard items that you address as a five-year update. The first is the, is looking at the IB in the Maple Road area. When the zoning ordinance was written in the master plan... When the zoning ordinance was written, and the master plan before that was written, was the idea that, that in this area, which, which includes four, really, four different general zones within the, within the master plan itself, these are areas that have existing industrial buildings, that some are obsolete, some are really non-functional anymore, some are viable, but there's the potential for both redevelopment of that area, as well as stability of the existing industrial area. So reflecting the need to, to make these remain economically viable, as well as retain some of their value, there were some changes to the zoning ordinance associated with that. And as I believe it was, I don't know who it was, but it was referred to as the Wild West, the IB district. It was opening up the zoning district, opened up the uses, allowing more uses, allowing more development, as well as reoccupa, reoccupancy of, of existing buildings. We've seen some reuse and some infill in the IB district. I don't think it's, we've seen the transformation that we actually envisioned in this area that was, that was going to partake. A little example of this is, we had an applicant come in to us recently that wanted to redo an existing industrial building that's really a loft building, and wanted to redo it for multifamily housing development and apartment development. Well, because of some of our zoning regulations, it just was not economically viable, they couldn't get the, the profit, as well as the number of units out of it that they needed. And that's just, if, if that would have come into place, that would have totally transformed the area in which this, this particular building was located. So looking longer term at the IB, as well as the Maple Road, there is potential for redevelopment, and potential to create some really interesting, unique places and reuse some of those existing buildings, both as residential housing, mixed use, work, live-work areas, as well as maintain some existing industrial uses in that area. So the goal, as before, was to maintain appropriate industrial areas, but also encourage redevelopment, and really look at different sub-areas within the IB district and along Maple Road to provide for a diverse mix of uses. So really, there's a three-pronged approach to this. One is to consider development incentives. How can we get the development community excited about this area, and what incentives can we provide, both from the city as well as the zoning ordinance, to address some of those? Are there any necessary public improvements? Oftentimes, in areas like this, a small amount of public investment really spurs some private investment, whether that's streetscape, landscaping, smaller, smaller issues, inclusion of sidewalks, et cetera. So a little bit of private investment goes a long way in terms of public changes and public investment. And lastly, are there any necessary zoning changes that we need to make as a result of this in the IB district moving forward? We have a really great example in our own backyard, or in our neighbor's backyard, of where this has been done, and this is the Eaton Road, Cole Street area in the city, in the city of Birmingham, right next door. What they've really done here is they have some similar, they had some similar-type infrastructure, street dimensions, et cetera, that we have in some of our IB districts in, in Troy. And what they have done is really opened this up and made this a whole mixed-use area. I don't know if anyone has been in this area before, but there is a major increased redevelopment, as well as some really, some housing options, some mixed use, that, that really has been, kind of really transformed this, really transformed this area, and really started with a few small developments that really kick-started and got, got the growth, the growth in the rest of the area. And so these are some of just the pictures of the area, of the area that we're looking at here. And what we'll do as part of this is, we'd like to take the planning commission on an actual tour of the area, and kind of see some of the ideas that they have done, and how we can kind of spur and kind of encourage this type of redevelopment in some of our IB districts and moving forward. The next item, the second item for consideration, is the Big Beaver corridor. The Big Beaver corridor has been studied and studied and studied over and over and over again, and we have a very, very nice example already existing, both in the Big Beaver corridor study, as well as the master plan. But it's worthwhile taking a look at, at those two documents. We have started to see some transformation of Big Beaver, the Granite City, the Jonah PUD, the Gallery of Troy. These wouldn't have been possible at the plan's vision, as well as the implementation. However, there's, things have changed. The development environment has changed, the markets dynamics are still in flux. We've seen the results of some of the submitted projects, and we know what we have to address and move forward. I think some of us might feel a little underwhelmed with the development that's come along Big Beaver, from what we anticipated in the plan, so maybe that should be addressed, both through the plan, as well as maybe subsequent changes to the zoning ordinance as well. So a Big Beaver, review of the Big Beaver corridor would be part of the five-year update. And again, this may require changes to the form-based district moving forward as well. As Mr. Carlisle alluded to, he passed all my, my thunder here, as he normally does. Changing demographics, Troy, Troy is not unique, like many Michigan and southeastern Michigan communities. It's aging, and by SEMCO predicts by 2030, there will be an equal amount of seniors 65 and older, as well as those under 18. This is the first time in history that's, that's been happening. This graphic is really interesting, because it shows the change in, in percentages of population between 2010 and 2040, the, the demographic of 65 and older is going to be increased anywhere from 30 to 50 percent in population, but the 35 to 59 and 60, 64 is actually going to drop by about 20 percent between those, that timeframe. This creates a significant change in both services, as well as taxable value and tax, tax collection. These, obviously, this population requires a significant amount of services, et cetera, but the tax base is typically in this younger, this younger demographic generation. So we need to think forward about how do we both encourage revitalization in, in attracting a younger population, but also how do we pay for and provide the necessary services for an elder population? These are not mutually exclusive, they're really hand-in-hand between the two of them. You have to increase the younger population to pay for the services for an elder population, and vice versa. So we're going to look at addressing those needs moving forward, too, in the five-year update. And lastly, there are a number of city-owned parcels and properties that currently are on the city, in the city's portfolio. Most of them are underutilized or nonutilized at this point. In the previous recreation plan, there were nine, I think, actually, I believe there were 11 park sites that were identified for, for, sorry, future park sites that were identified that the city owned. Those have been removed from the plan, and now there are currently nine parcels that the city owns that were identified in the, in the, in the rec. plan for future park use, but because of funding, the city right now is in trouble maintaining their existing parks, let alone redeveloping, or developing new parks. There are also, in addition, there are a number of other remnant parcels that the city owns, and they're looking to find future uses and future, what to do with them. And so one of the ideas was to look at all these parcels in total, and figure out a redevelopment strategy, either maintaining them, keeping them, selling them off to adjacent property owners, selling them off for redevelopment. These are some of the strategies that we can look at moving forward. And lastly, we want to make this a, a heavily-involved community engagement process. We're looking for creative ways to engage the community. We want to combine both the traditional public open houses and public meetings with some of the technology options moving forward in terms of online participation, et cetera. So again, we will do some public forums, these will typically be arranged around specific topics in geographic areas, this will allow for public discussion, but we also want to maintain an, an interactive online engagement, as well as a project website, so there's a central clearinghouse of information that will be available for the public for the review, and they can kind of participate on their own time and in their own way. So we're going to take a step, step back here, and just listen to the planning commission. What, what's going to happen here is, we are going to put together a scope for the city to review and moving this forward, but we want to make sure that we've addressed all the topics that the planning commission finds are pertinent, that they want to address as part of the five-year plan. You've had the plan here for five years, master plan. Are there any issues that we did not address, anything we want, you want to discuss in further detail? Any other focus areas that we should be considering? Any other comments or questions? We don't have to answer this tonight, this is a, this is something to think about and come back to us in, in a couple of weeks, we can talk about it in more depth, but I just kind of wanted to kick the topic off tonight for discussion. Director Sautner, is there anything you want to add to what I, what I talked about tonight?
Well, I thought you did a really good job of keeping the presentation at a policy level. Some, one of, there's a couple of hot buttons that, that I really want to, I really want to hammer on and focus on moving forward. One is the demographics. Demographics, particularly expanded housing opportunities for an aging population, we're lacking right now. And this is going to hit us like a two-by-four before we know it. That's something we need to think about and really, really focus on. That's probably my, that's probably my number-one concern. Yeah, I think, but taking a step back from that, I think, given the fact that the plan was adopted in 2008, and it's five years later, and we went through, you know, the worst recession since the Great Depression, the plan has stood the test of time pretty darn well. There's some minor tweaking, I think, but I think it was, I thought at the time it was an excellent document, and, and it's really withstood time well over five years. Needs some tweaking, but I think it's really held its own from a policy perspective.
Thank you. Any, any initial thoughts from the commission? Yes, Mr. Shepke?
Yes, I had a question, and it's about, you talked about selling or getting rid of parkland. Seems to me there was some, there was some bond issues passed about 10 years or so to, to purchase parkland. Would it be short-sighted to get rid of this land?
Yeah, that's one of the issues that we looked into when we were redoing the recreation plan right now, is how those were purchased. When I, when I said, when I said selling that property, I probably misspoke. It's something that we, it will be an option to consider, I'm not, we're not encouraging or recommending selling of this property at this point. We don't even know which parcels we would even consider selling at this point, or if we can even sell them, because some of them were purchased with bond property, with bond monies that would preclude us from selling it. So we want to present the strategy of how to deal with many of these remnant parcels, both those that were bought for park purposes, as well as those that are just existing, the city's acquired for various reasons. So I don't want us to think that we're going to, we're recommending at this point to sell anything, I just want to bring in the idea for discussion, as well as a planning effort as part of the five-year update.
So that the plan for the parkland is going to have to basically be wrapped into the different areas, and what you're going to do with them, how many changes you're going to make, because you haven't, because I'm an elderly person, I guess, I, actually, more parkland or more open space, it's more conducive to, for recreation and for health reasons. It's just invaluable, because if you have to, have to buy it back, you really have to pay through the nose, so it's, you have to really consider that before you think of selling.
Yeah, and that's a really good point. The city has, is, is going through and has gone through an update to their existing recreation, park recreation plan. And in the previous plan, there were 11 sites that were identified for new park sites. Two of them were, two of them have been developed since the last time the plan was created and, to date. So that means there's nine remaining parcels. Realistically, understanding how the city's finances are today, as well as projecting the future, we didn't, the city didn't feel it was fair to include those as potential park development. That does not mean that they're going to sell them, it just doesn't, it just means right now, they're not planning on improving them as park at this time. They were removed from the plan, so that everyone was assured to know that there were no future plans for parks for those particular sites. That doesn't mean that they're going to sell them, it's just they were removed from the plan itself. So those are nine of them, we need to think about what we're going to do with those, those parcels in the future, whether they're, whether they may be parking, park, park properties in the future, or they, they maintain open space and they just don't get improved, or we potentially look for redevelopment options for them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And we'll identify which parcels are part of the original park ones, which ones are not, how we purchased the various ones, and we'll go through analysis of all the different parcels and how we obtained them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Reddman?
Continuing along the same path of recreation and parks, I thought I read in an article that the, the last survey, that the residents thought that trails and pathways were one of the highest priorities. And I'm just wondering, you know, I, I recall when we had the Trail and Pathways Committee, that it was done away with because of staff time and, and funding. So I, I also tend to agree with, with Mr. Shepke here, that, you know, if we're going to be an aging population, we don't want to take the opposite view and say, no, we don't need any more paths, and we don't need any more trails, and even parks.
Actually, to reassure you, the, the trails plan that was done was actually inserted into the recreation plan. So it is now a part of the plan, it wasn't part of the plan before, so it actually solidifies the importance of parks and trails. And so with that, we can now go out and try to get grant funding to improve and provide for additional parks and trails. So the, the two issues that came up as part of the recreation plan was dog parks and trails and paths, those were the two by far. And both of them have been included in the recreation plan as important item, action item. So we're not losing the idea of how important trails and paths are in the future.
Keeping in mind that the, that the trailway plan was, was written in, about five years ago, and prior to the reorganization and restructuring of the city of Troy, and we, it's, it was inserted as a, with the intent of revisiting it and seeing, you know, how it stands the test of time, how relevant it is, what can be kind of gleaned from the plan, what could be, what could be kept, and, you know, what, what can we keep moving forward, and how do we, given the fact that you're absolutely right, and the number-one, the number-one priority in, in identified in the survey was, was trails. It was this go-around, updating the parks and recreation plan, and it was five years ago. It's consistently the number-one priority. So the people have spoken, it's, the, the priority hasn't changed, but the, the challenge now is, given the economic times, how we move forward with, with this priority.
You spoke about participation of various groups. I'd like to hear some ideas as to how we have a specific focus group with the development community, and understand where they're coming from, or where they think they want to go, and, and them understand from our perspective about quality of developments, and, and just meeting the future needs, as you guys have been talking about it. I think there's been a, you know, some, some of the developers that come in here are top-notch. I mean, we saw tonight that the developer came in, I mean, he's, they're, they're really trying to, to, to make this thing work and satisfy the, the requirements and the needs of the, or the desires of the planning commission. Others come in here, and it's an uphill battle. So I'd like to try to get some dialogue, and maybe, I mean, I think it'll be a coeducational process, both for us, but, and for them as well.
Ironically, as Jordan Jonah was presenting to you, I was sitting here kind of reminiscing about the fact that one of the first projects that I reviewed on behalf of Independence Township back in the early 80s was done by his father, Arkon Jonah. So just have Ben sitting over here, and Jordan standing up here, and me sitting on the office, and of course, Arkon's at home tonight relaxing, but I just thought it was kind of ironic. And of course, Mr. Jonah, for example, is, is a good example of someone who is understanding what we're trying to achieve, obviously not trying to, you know, with, with the market doesn't respond to what we want, he's been the first one to try to help educate us also, but also try to meet us more than halfway. He's just, you know, one of the shining examples. I actually, when we were, when, when Ben was speaking about Maple Road Corridor, and I've been thinking a lot about this, because I think we've done a lot to remove barriers to want, you know, for the development of that area from a zoning standpoint, but we don't have the market interest in that area yet that we have, for example, in Big Beaver. And there's probably real good reasons for that. But I think that Maple Road Corridor would be an excellent, maybe, case for having a developers' forum in that particular regard. And have an invited group of developers, you know, spend a afternoon doing a tour of the corridor, and then coming back and having a focus group discussion with the commission, and whoever else you want to have there, and really get their ideas and observations about what we need to do to, to redevelop that area. We are doing a similar type of thing on Washtenaw Avenue in Washtenaw County. It's actually a four-community effort, it's, the whole thing is called Reimagine Washtenaw, but it's obviously a very diverse corridor, it's got residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, probably not nearly as much industrial, but one of the things that we've done is, is organize a developers' forum on that, in that particular project. Because let's face it, we, we can propose, you know, everything in the world from a land use standpoint, but if the development community doesn't believe there's a market potential there, then nothing's going to happen. Or if there are certain barriers to entry into that marketplace that we can assist with in some fashion... that marketplace that we can assist with in some fashion, you know, we ought to be considering this, you know. Half a loaf is better than none at all. And right now, we have no loaf on Maple Road. If we were to able to get half of what we wanted on Maple Road, you'd be looking at, you know, a huge tremendous jump in economic base just in that area alone. And, you know, it could become the, you know, it could become an area where rents or the buy-in to that area was at a much lower cost, so that it could be the area where the young entrepreneurs really could actually have a entry into the marketplace in that particular area. But these are the kinds of things I think would be very interesting and exciting to explore because there's some, you know, there's some great buildings down there. There's some property that easily is convertible. There's some property that should go. But we have some opportunities there. But so that, John, I think that would be a really good, a good place to have, you know, developers, architects, you know, people who are in the land development business, the commercial realtors, do a real focused forum on Maple Road and hear what the people that would be the, people actually investing their money think.
You know, just as a follow-up, and maybe I'll direct this to Brent. I don't remember how much of a marketing effort we were able to do after the master plan was done. And what I mean by that is getting into the community and making sure the people that that new master plan most affected or opened the doors for really, really heard it and really, kind of really put a blitz on. And I think this is almost after we get this educational process and after we get to a point where, hey, these are some ideas. I think we really need to market this thing. We need to get it out there and let people know the potential here. So I think it's kind of a down-the-road quite a ways, but it's, I think maybe the exclamation point on the end of the sentence.
Mr. Tagle, too, you know, now that, you know, Glenn Laypen, the city's economic development director's fully on board and has been moving it, you know, again, the Maple Road is a wonderful laboratory for, you know, economic development tools. And he, I think he'd be a real valuable asset to help us, you know, organize some of that activity there, too. In that regard, I think that we have, I have to, you know, really want to compliment city staff, Brent, Mark Miller, and Glenn, because they really have done to, you know, within, with the resources they have, have really done a lot to promote the innovative nature of the zoning ordinance and the fact that places like Maple Road, zoning will not be a constraint to most development projects in that particular area. So I think they've done a pretty good job. But obviously, this is a great opportunity, again, to reinforce that message, fine-tune it, try something different if we need to, you know, and really get that area going.
I think previously, Big Beaver was the, kind of the gem of the, of the master plan. And now maybe Maple Road could take over that.
Well, and the message has been, you know, the marching orders, too, I mean, have been really clear. Not, and I say marching orders, I mean, in general, from city council to city management, that we need, you know, if we're gonna solve our economic problems in the city, we've gotta grow our way out of it. So, obviously, most of the attention has been placed on, in a Big Beaver where the greatest potential has been in the near term.
Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, Ben, based on his comments, you commented on Wild West. I've heard it referred to as Cowboy Town in the IB district. You mentioned one potential redevelopment in IB that just wasn't feasible. Then, I'm gonna ask you and Brent to come back to us and in detail tell us why it wasn't feasible. Because that was, five years ago when we developed the master plan, that was what we were hoping for. And if we've got pinch points in the master plan that preclude that, then I totally support your developer forum. And I think it needs to be done. But I think we need to understand where our existing pinch points are before we do that. Because that's something that needs to be fixed. Because we have an awful lot of property south of Maple Road that needs to have something done to it.
Phil, did you have a question?
Well, I concur about Maple Road. And one of the big points that I drive by every day is the Kmart site. And I was just wondering, what could we address in a master plan to help the developer on that property? You know, it's one of the biggest sites that we have along Big Beaver that isn't being utilized. It should be torn down and redeveloped, but, you know, we were told by developers that we had cartoons and that it really wasn't feasible to develop it as it had been proposed. So really, I think that would, to me, that would be one of the biggest sites that, that, you know, that stands out in Troy that really needs some attention. And I would really, you know, if we had a forum with the Somerset owners who own the property now, there would be a great opportunity there to redevelop that site and to manage it. I know, just a little aside, I know Oakland County Economic Development is looking at Bluefield Park. They're looking at the Summer Place Mall. You know, they, they're addressing those properties. They're marketing them. The economic development people are going out and pursuing those properties stringently and very specifically to try to help encourage development or redevelopment of those sites. And I would encourage, at least in the master plan, some attention to those properties.
Internally, we've had the same discussions and completely agree that we need to reach out there and try to figure out how that property, because the key to so much of the Big Beaver Corridor plans has really focused on that property redeveloping. So, we agree.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes, a few years ago, at the community center I attended, they had a bunch of engineering students and architectural students. I don't know if it was from Walsh College, Lawrence Tech, somewhere. And they put on a wonderful conceptual plan for, I think, Maple and Big Beaver roads. And it was really, a lot of them really poured their heart into it. And I wonder if anything from that, all of that work that they did has been saved or catalogued or something like that, that maybe we could utilize that sometime in the future with other, with other ideas that have been brought in.
The answer to that is yes. All that work has been saved. And yes, we did take it into consideration with the 2008 master plan. But it would certainly be worthwhile, again, dusting that off and, again, sharing that with the commission and culling whatever ideas that were there out of that. Yes, definitely.
Mr. Strick?
I really was pleased to hear that you stressed the fact that the master plan should be a policy. I really think that that's very, very true. And the zoning ordinance goes hand in hand with it. However, I do think that, as you indicated, a lot of our sites are problem sites. We're 90% built out. We have to have some flexibility. I think that is number one key, and not just in the Maple, but I'm talking about throughout. And we can't be real rigid. I, that's, that's the main thing that I'm real concerned about is the rigidness that we're, you know, the form-based code on Maple, on Big Beaver, where it has to be straight, has to be without any annulations. And I, I think that we have to be some flexibility on that. The other thing that brought to my mind was the Kmart site several years ago, we thought, before the so-called recession, it would have been really great if the city would have sold this property right here. This is a golden area. This is worth a lot of money. And if they were to sell this property, they could probably pay for and have the police station rebuilt, the city hall rebuilt, everything rebuilt on that site, which would be a tremendous asset or catalyst to that whole area. It would force offices to go, their attorneys would be there. There'd be a lot of, I think, catalysts. But that was, I brought that up, and that was a part of the Lawrence Tech study that was presented, along with several other things, the art colonies that we were talking about near the design center. And that was all brought up. But part of that, and you were very much involved, and so was Mr. Schultz, remember, we had all kinds of meeting public sectors with the developers as well as the private sector in developing this master plan. There were a lot of hours put into it, tremendous amount of time. As Brent knows, I mean, Brent was a part of that as well, I know. So, there was a lot of thought that went into it with the private sector that you were talking about, as well as the developers. I mean, that was a lot of effort. Now, if you're talking about redoing that, that's fine. But that was, that was a lot of man-hours, just tremendous amount. The other thing I did want to mention is that, the key thing that I have concern about, and of course, our golden corridor, which is Maple, Big Beaver. I keep stressing this, and I can cite you several examples, where number one, traffic, slowing down traffic is a key thing. We have 55 mile an hour traffic in here still want, we talk walkability. No one's gonna be walking, not with that kind of a ongoing traffic situation that we have, which is really an expressway, a continuation from Macomb County. The other thing that really affects us more than anything else, which was in the, the Big Beaver study that was done, was lighting. I mean, right now, we have highway lighting. And we just did that also on Big Beaver, on Rochester Road, which was a new development. It really is a shame. We don't have the coach lighting that they do at the Nautical Mile over in St. Clair Shores or some of the other areas, which reduces the ambiance and creates the environment, which is not what we're doing. I mean, we're just not doing that. And that's also could be addressed on Maple Road as well. I mean, those are key factors, and I know that there are costs and there's monies involved. But we've gotta get the rest of our staff, engineers, et cetera, on board of what we want to accomplish. Because I think that it's very important that we work united. And we have our objective and goals, but I'm not too sure that everybody else is on board with what we're, what we're trying to accomplish, especially the Big Beaver Corridor study that was done. I thought that was very, very excellent. But I've got other points, but I think, I don't want to take over the conversation here. But those are my, my highlights of my notes that I wrote down. You know, I'm looking at, I think it's on Avon and Adams Road, the development in there. They've got real nice lighting. I mean, it is just, lighting is so important to me. And I can't stress it enough, in my opinion, as well as obviously landscaping.
I thought you liked good, good designed buildings, too, Tom.
Pardon me?
I said, I thought you liked well-designed buildings, too.
Oh, absolutely.
Any other, yeah, Mr.?
Yeah, I got some comments. First of all, one of my first experiences, when I started getting involved in city activities, was this master plan. And it was just kind of overwhelming to see how much different Troy's master plan was versus what I'd seen in other communities. And now, you know, several years later that I'm sitting here on the planning commission, it's kind of exciting for me to actually see not only the impact it's had, because we've seen developments occur, even though we've had a slow economy that have, and we're actually starting to see that transformation from this plan. I think in terms of from what a city can provide, this master plan does a whole lot more than what we can do by spending our own money in doing this. We can provide the guidance and oversight for private enterprise to go and do these projects for us and build the city that we're really striving for. I think in that regard, it's a great opportunity and a challenge as well. So, and I do like the demographic information that you brought up. I think that's critical. And older population not only means that we have more special needs in that regard, we also have a lot more leisure. Some of the people I know, I know my stepdad in particular, he's in the best shape of his life at this point. And, you know, being able to tie that additional leisure into being able to get out in the community, tying into the trails, integrating into where people are actually living, I think that does provide a lot of value to our community. In fact, Troy is one of the weaker communities in terms of being able to do that relative to even some of the cities in our surrounding area. I think we need to focus on, on that in terms of building the image of Troy. I don't see very much discussion on Rochester Road. I think it's a gem. Right now, we've had the road expansion from Big Beaver going up for a ways, and there's a lot of opportunity and it's economically viable. It's a natural trail for all of people, you know, going from jobs down in Detroit up to their homes in Rochester, Rochester Hills. It's a very heavily traveled area.
Yes.
Economically viable. Lots of opportunity for development in that area as well. Some areas, some of those malls could really probably be improved as well. And I don't see those specifically addressed. I'd like to see more in the plan in that regard. I do like the plans on Maple Road from the Maple Road Corridor study. And some of what I've seen here and discussed is it being a point of attention. It, it's kind of a challenge to push too much in that regard because it may be competing with Big Beaver Road in some regard, especially since they're going in parallel directions. But I think in a large coordinated development project, if we can get enough developers on board, that would be a real good opportunity to try and build a new image for Maple Road. So I would be supportive of anything we can do in that regard.
Mr. Chairman?
Just wanted to make one comment. I sounded kind of negative, but I want to say there were a lot of positive things. I just want to clarify that. We did a lot, a lot of positive things. And I'm very proud of, I was a part of the master plan. I was very proud of that. And I think we did an awful lot. And I think, Brent, you put a lot of effort into it as well, I know.
I might as well add my two bits. Most, most of the comments I agree with here, I mean, virtually all of them I agree with. And they've already made most of my comments already. But I did want to focus back on demographics. We've got an aging population. And we've got to focus on public transportation somehow in this process, too. And since I was on the Troy Trails Committee, and that was a very well-worked-out plan, not, not patting myself on the back, but there were over 100 people involved.
Yes.
That created that plan, plus the professional that took all our ideas and put it into a written form. What I'm suggesting here is two things. One, okay, it's a five-year plan. We know we've got an aging population, so public transportation should be on the focus. But also, we look at the next five years, the next five years. What do we have? We've got the demographics of, you know, just like in Detroit, we've got young people coming back into older areas. Now, we will be older, maybe, at that time. But again, what's their focus today? Public transportation. So, I just, I'm just saying, we've got public transportation coming up at us from both sides. Near-term from older people, but possibly long-term from younger people.
Yeah. One of the things that might be, the commission may wish to see is, we've been, I've done several presentations in the last two years, and actually stemmed from work we did from Macomb County. And essentially, the premise of this work is that the kinds of things that we're doing for placemaking to attract a younger population are equally applicable to retaining and enhancing the life of our aging population also. So, I might want to share some of that. Because the things that you're talking about with walkability, trails, places to go, interesting cultural places to go, you know, these are, while young people like this stuff, it's the same kind of thing that, you know, an older population also wants. And one of the things we have to also keep in mind is, you know, our older population, of which I include myself in that, are, you know, are the demographic that still have assets for the most part, you know, financial resources, you know, obviously educational resources, you know, business connections, community connections, time and willingness to contribute to the community. And so, an equal amount of attention really could go that way. And so the things that we do in that regard are going to be equally applicable to attracting a younger population also, I think.
Well, I think you've heard some initial comments.
Great.
Look forward to hearing more from you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, how long of a period are we talking about? What the scope of work? What are we looking at as far as the plan?
I don't know if you've put a timeframe on it yet, but certainly, we won't, I think some of the issues that we've identified will sort of lead us in that direction. But I, I wouldn't think that, that we should be able to accomplish the bulk of this throughout the balance of this year, Mr. Sanzicca. So, we're not talking about a two-year process. Because remember, I think we're looking at a fine-tuning here and a focusing in on some of these areas that you've identified. And by the way, I do agree with the comment about Rochester Road, too. I think we've got some real, of course, some undiscovered opportunities there is what I'm trying to say, along Rochester Road also. So, I would think that we want to try to keep the focus, you know, for, you know, for about the next six to nine months and try to wrap as much as we can up before the end of the year. But if it goes over into the following year, that's, that's all right, too. We might sort of take this down in pieces, actually.
Mr. Chairman?
Just to remind the planning commission, there's a couple of, the state enabling legislation has a couple of hiccups that that's mandated by law, that, you know, some, some review periods that we have to kind of... that we have to kind of put the project on hold and wait for public review, and that's going to cost us a couple of months, unfortunately, but that's the nature of the beast. So, you know, if it's a six-month project, you can add a couple of months to it to make it an eight-month project because of the waiting period that's required. Just a reminder.
Thank you. All right, well, let's wrap this up. Public comments? Seeing no one stepping forward, and Planning Commission comments. Phil, would you like to start us off?
No comment. Thank you.
No comment.
There's one thing that I'd like to add to what was talked about tonight, as far as lighting can create quite a lot of ambiance and really dress an area up, but we also have to address some of this digital signage, because that can trash an area. So, there's got to be some kind of balance in here, and that's got to be incorporated in that balance somewhere, because some of this, whether it's size, or brightness, or whatever, it can really mess an area up real bad.
That's a good point. Mr. Schultz?
Excited to see the 7-Eleven up on Waddles going up, along with the new fast-food restaurant down on Maple at Liburnoy, and I am amazed at how tall the transit center is going to be. And I would, though I realize he's incredibly busy at the moment, I would like to formally or publicly put out an invitation for Mr. Kishnik to come and meet the Planning Commission at some point in time.
Mr. Stritt. No comment. Mr. Kempin?
Yeah, just wanted that one comment. I know you said it's something to have to bear, the extra time allotment to get public and review time and stuff like that. I think that that's a great opportunity to have us going out and market this plan to the community. The more time this takes, the more it's going to put Troy on the map as far as attracting attention, getting newspaper coverage. Maybe we can make some headlines and take some of those dollars that are going down to Detroit and bring them here, do some big development projects, because that's the sort of thing that could save something like our Maple Road Corridor.
Phil?
That's a great point, Mr. Kempin. I've already had, I had a conversation with a newspaper reporter today, inviting her for a sit-down with myself and Mr. Carlisle, once we get into it, to have a detailed discussion on some of the concepts and get the word out. So, your point is well-taken.
Ms. Lancaster?
Nothing. Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.